This is a special day. I guess it's filled with emotion. Huge turnout, obviously. Family and friends and people that are excited about the new council coming in and some of us that are maybe not so excited. No, I'm joking. No, I keep telling people, I've got a bit of sadness at this point. The chief earlier said, you know, that'll last for just a short period of time. I'll be free and ready to go. So again, I'm just very, very happy for each one of you being here today. And this is what makes our city so good, is we can all come together and celebrate the new and some change. And we're just very, very thankful for you being here. We are going to start with the presentation of the colors and Monsignor Droll will come after that. So if you will, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O God, our Father, you have created all things, ordering them for your glory and for our good. You are the source of all authority, including that of government. We ask you to bless our new mayor, new city council members, and all government officials who serve our city. Help them to be sensitive to your guidance and direction. Give them wisdom and insight into meeting the needs of the community now and for the future. Give them good health and peace, even in the midst of conflicts and emergencies that may arise. We pray for all in the city of Midland. Help us to have an openness to listen to one another, an attitude of cooperation in arriving at decisions, and compassion for those in need. We give you thanks, O God, for leaders who have served us in the past and who have helped this city prosper. Lord God, we pray that all of us may follow what the prophet Micah described as your will for us, only to do right and to love goodness and to walk humbly with God. Amen.
Yeah, I'm very thankful for each one of you being here. We see family and friends. We have some elected officials here. If you are serving, would you please stand and let us recognize you? We have a special guest from San Angelo, Mayor Duane, and he's here with us today from San Angelo. And he's been doing a great job. We did work together on the leadership. We're really thankful for him being here and the leadership that he provides in Midland, Mayor. So as then we continue in our future of water, that's going to be a big part of it. So we're very thankful for you to be here. We're very thankful for our staff. I can say without a shadow of a doubt, any of the successes we've had is a testimony to our staff. Midland's really unique. It has a group of people that really love this city. They serve us every single day. They take lots of heat in different times. And I just am so, so appreciative that I've got to work with you guys. It has been the best part, quite honestly. And we're very, very thankful. I know people don't recognize how important you are. I do. The rest of council does. And truly, I'm not kidding, truly, you're the reason Midland is so good. And I just thank you very much. All right, we have a few presentations, two presentations to be exact. If, Michael Trost, if you will come up, please, I've got a presentation for you.
Oh, that's my turn.
Yes, sir. Now, I always say, Michael brings a lot of levity and humor to our council, which is important because sometimes you have a really tough situation or votes and we always appreciate it, kind of having some levity and taking some of the edge off of it. So, Michael.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. That's what a lot of people say. I'm just a big joke.
That's just a perfect joke. Please.
Good morning. Good morning. Well, this is a bittersweet day for me, of course. I'm out and I don't mind, let me tell you the truth. It's been a great six years. I feel like District Four that I represent for the next few minutes. And to my successor, Jay Ross Lacy. I didn't see Jay Ross. Where am I?
Oh, you're right.
Well, you talked about some of the past. Well, it has been a good ride. I've had privilege of sitting next to Mayor Perry for some time now and it's been just a real joy to be a part of the action of this city council. The members that I've served with these six years, we've done, I believe we've done a great deal of things, good things. We came from Midland in 2008 when we were wondering what we were going to do and where we were going to find our next dollar, to now where we've just got a lot of dollars so that we can do things that we couldn't do before. It's been a great ride. I don't regret one moment, not one. I also don't regret the night of the election, that I congratulate Jay Ross Lacy. I think he's going to do a great job. We had lunch the other day and I want to thank him for being able to come forward and be able to be what he's wanting to be because I know he's going to be good at this. I'm proud of some of the things that I've been able to accomplish, like being a part of the Midland Development Corporation, the Aerospace Development Board ushering in the aerospace industry into Midland, new industry that we've never had before out at the airport. I'm proud to be a part of that and have been a part of that since we began with X Corps. I think you all know who X Corps is. And so I'm very proud of those accomplishments. Another accomplishment is District Four, the hotels, the businesses, the things that have happened in District Four in the last six years have been just unbelievable. And Mr. Lacy has quite a good job ahead of him, trying to keep a handle and manage the rest of it up here on him. So I don't know what else to say except I would like to thank all of those who supported me over the years, all the citizens of Midland who liked me and disliked me for my decisions. I don't think they, no, but liked me. Sorry, I have. I'm very proud of those who have served for the citizens of the city of Midland. This is an experience that I truly, truly will never forget. And I thank you all very much. Mayor Perry and, excuse me, Mayor Morales to be a few minutes. I can't tell you how wonderful this is. What a great moment. Congratulations to you too. And Mr. Councilmember Hotchkiss, I know you're here. I saw you. Well, you see, these glasses are not for distance. Thank you very much, Michael Morales.
This is just a small token of our appreciation. I don't know what we could ever do to thank you for your service, but when you are in the future, you'll be looking at this and remembering those great times because I know you did serve it in a great way. And we're just so, so thankful that you agreed to do that.
Had a lot of fun.
Blessings. James?
Michael, I'm right here.
This is a small little kind of award we should do for you. It was, it was, it was fun. Michael, congratulations for all you did.
Sorry, Michael. You know, I wasn't sad until I came in and everybody started saying they were sad. I was happy. I spent the new year in London for business. I looked happier to be than that. But today is a special day, as Wes said. You know, in a lot of countries and even in a lot of cities in the United States, peaceful transition doesn't happen very frequently. And in this place we call home, it absolutely does. There are really four general comments I'd like to make. And Michael, since I kind of took a shot at you, you can be my timekeeper. This is one on this. It's right here. It's right here. First, let me say this. I absolutely want to thank the citizens of District Three who elected me twice to represent them on the city council. And this is the guy who came to Midland in early 1995 thinking that he would only be here three years. And almost 20 years later, I got to do the wonderful job of the people's business. I got to serve the citizens of Midland. And I'm truly honored and will forever be honored that I had that privilege. And I'm also a little, a little happy that somebody else gets to enjoy that. Specifically, Sharla, the key to District Three and representing it really well lies in an envelope that I'm going to give you. That, by the way, Scott Duffer didn't give me, but I'm going to give it to you. It is the name, numbers, and email addresses of five citizens who will call you every week, not every issue. National affairs, local affairs, what's happening in Boxwell, they do that. They will call you. If you can get through those five people, then you got this made. It is a cakewalk. All the other people who call, no problem. Congratulations to you. You're my longtime friend. I think you will do an incredible job representing the citizens of District Three and really representing all of us. Secondly, you know, the job we do is kind of a sideshow, as you can see. But it's really the thousand-plus people who make sure the water comes out of this figure, who make sure your streets are safe, who make sure if your house is on fire, they're there. And within Gen Five, they're still there. They make sure of all of these things. And sometimes we do take them for granted, but I can assure you that you can do without us. You can, you can go months, not years, not hearing from us, but we can't go without those thousands of people who are our neighbors, who are our friends, who do the people's work on a day-to-day basis. So like Mayor Perry, I'd like to give them a hand. Specifically, we have a great city manager and his team. We have a great city attorney and his team. The municipal court judges are just tireless public servants. And of course, the city secretary's office, who I became very close to because I'm the council liaison to that office, Amy Turner and her staff are phenomenal. They are the keepers of all things historic in Midland, and they do an incredible job. She's probably the one I'm going to miss the most. Amy, I love you and if you ever need me, please call. There is, and I mentioned this to Sharla yesterday on the phone, she says, you know, how do you know what people really want and what they really feel? And how do you get your finger on the pulse of the community? And what I told her was fairly simple. Beyond those five folks that are in that envelope that is news to her today, because I didn't want to scare her, but beyond that, those people who you are close to, who will tell you the good, the bad, and the ugly, and know, you know that they will still be your friends and they know that you will still be theirs, those are the people who are going to be your best indicator of what you're supposed to do. So I had some of those people in my life continue to. They have been supportive and with me ever since I landed on that Plymouth Rock we call Midland. And I'm not going to mention them because that's not what they do this for. But I will say my heartfelt thanks to many of you who are in this room, who I became very, very close to and whom I forged an incredible friendship with. You know who you are. I just wanted to say publicly, thank you, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate all the things that you've done for me. Finally, can you believe that? Finally, let me say this. The business of the council is important work. I don't ever want to discount that. We, this is the, of course, closing of one chapter for some of us, probably for all of us, and the opening of a new chapter for all of us. And I want to, Jerry Morales and I have been friends for about 16 years. And regardless of what happens during campaigns, Jerry and I will always be friends for as long as we both shall live. And Jerry, I have a small gift for you that is one of my favorite books on the challenges of leadership in challenging times. And we certainly have challenging times in this community. And so I would encourage you in the council to think boldly, but more importantly, act boldly. It's very, very critical. So I have a small gift for you. And really, this is still part of the final league, but probably is part of it. One of the things that happened to me on the council that really guided my work on the council was we had a special election. I think it was my second year, roughly my second year on the council or end to my first year on the council, but it's when Jerry was elected to bring an unexpired term. What happened with that was a whole bunch of change on the city council. Buildings got off, things happened, people moved and shifted. And then we had kind of another election and I think Vicki Haley popped over to the right side of the mayor. And I moved in one seat next to Scott Duffer. That was the worst news I've ever had in my life at that time. I will tell you that I am so impressed with Scott Duffer and the relationship that we have been able to forge over the last four years. He, he has taught me so many things about leadership. One of the big things he taught me, and I think he whispered it in my ear, that we were going through some tough issue and everybody was angry. And he said, John, every issue is not your issue. And I thought, dog, he said something that I really appreciate. From now forward, I have had the utmost respect, adoration, and admiration for Scott Duffer. I think he is a true statesman on this council. I'm glad he served as long as he did. I look forward to our future friendship and relationship going forward. You're an incredible man, a great aggie, and I appreciate, I appreciate you more than you know. Thank you all for the opportunity to take my last stand here. Much, much fortune and luck and Godspeed to the new city council. Thank you all.
He is being, oh, maybe, John was my, is the spoke, is the statesman in our group. He would always ask, we'd get into these tough issues and it'd be fun to look over and watch John. He'd be ready to speak and he'd be getting, and he'd back off because someone else would jump in. He was always the gentleman. And then when everybody kind of finished, John would ask the distilling question. He would ask the question that needs to be answered of the questions. And so we're going to miss you, but Midland is going to miss you because you had this experience and this ability to lead. And I'm going to miss that and I know Midland's going to miss it. But here's a small token of our appreciation and good luck.
Thank you very much. Is there a reason there is no battery in here?
There is a battery. No batteries. All right, Jerry, you'll put them up.
You should not get used to those shorter mirrors. That was quite a few inches down there. Folks, we have been very, very blessed and fortunate to have such a wonderful mayor these last five years. And the city has been fortunate to have Mayor Wes Perry serve our community for the last 11 years. I know from, he would tell me personally that one of the joys of serving as mayor was going into schools and talking to children. And so he said, you know, when you're ever having a bad day or you don't feel comfortable that day, I promise you, just get up that morning, go to school, walk into class and go read a book. That's the kind of mayor that Wes Perry has been. He really thinks of our community, all the way from our young children to our young professionals, young adults, to our business community, to our senior citizen. He has served everybody so well, keeping them in mind, keeping their hearts, keeping their businesses. He brought a special allure to our city council. He's a very smart man, owns very many businesses. But one thing he never lost was his family. And one thing I've been paying attention and I'll continue to learn from him because he's not going anywhere. He'll contend, I hope he'll be a mentor and stay around. But he's put God first. I know that. His faith is very strong. His family is right close to that. This community is right behind that. And those citizens that come with that, he has truly, truly been a God-given man to this community. And we are better served today. Our community is in a great place because of Mayor Perry's leadership. He is very patient, very kind, and thinks things through. So Mayor Perry, we, from the bottom of our heart, thank you for your time and your dedication. To Ronnie and the kids, I'm not sure, I didn't see them, but I'm sure they're here. Thank you to the families for allowing your husband, your father, the grandfather to serve our community for the last 11 years. I'm glad that you're able to get Wes back and I know he's excited about being with you on more time. And we're going to miss you, but I will be picking up phone. I will walk across the street to bother you. Thank you for all your time and service to Midland, Texas. And I know there's a guy in the left row, and there may be another council member too who'd like to come say a few words because they've been close friends and worked closely together. And I don't, please come up if you'd like to. But on behalf of Midland, Texas, again, these are some tokens that you'll remember us and the city. And you have put a very large dent in our community. So thank you for all your work and we look forward to continue working with you.
Ronnie, you need to come up for a second, please? I'm going to keep this really brief. I'm so thankful to all of our, politics is going to be pretty, that's an oxymoron, but really I am just so very, very thankful. My family has been there. You know, my mom and dad aren't here right now, but he was the one that would call or he'd read the newspaper first thing. He'd go, well, nobody was yelling at you today or missing on you. So it's really kind of hard on our families. It's not so bad on us, but it's hard on families. And those that are with Jerry, I know you're going to feel some of that. But I just am so, so very thankful. My daughter's here and I know one of my grandsons is here. So we are very faithful and to you. I couldn't have made this without you. You know, going through a campaign is pretty tough. Listening to people say things about you that are, that are maybe not true. I'm going to say they're all not true. But you were always there to love on me and encourage me and fix my speeches. You always said, you know, the best speeches are the shortest ones. And so I'd do a speech and she'd immediately just chop it down to about half or a quarter of what it was. But I couldn't have made this without you. I'm so, so very thankful. And you deserve it more than I do. Thank you very much for your good service. Thank you.
Can we have Sharla come forward? As a city secretary, one of my favorite things to do is to swear in the new council members as my future bosses. So without further ado, we'll go ahead. Stand up here. Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Sharla Hotchkiss.
I, Sharla Hotchkiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of District Three City Council Member.
Of District Three City Council Member.
For the city of Midland.
For the city of Midland.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. At least it's not blood.
That's what you think.
And then if we could have Judge Leonard and Jay Ross Lacy come forward. Please raise your right hand.
I, Jay Ross Lacy.
I, Jay Ross Lacy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of District Four City Council Member.
Of the office of District Four City Council Member.
For the city of Midland and the state of Texas.
For the city of Midland and the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This gives me great honor to be swearing you in, Jerry. So thank you for allowing me the privilege.
Thank you.
You'll repeat after me. I, Jerry F. Morales.
I, Jerry F. Morales.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of Midland.
For the city of Midland.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you. This is my wife, beautiful wife, Mary Morales. I said to you, when you win the election and the lull in between is long, but they put you to work immediately. Thank you, Midland. Thank you first and foremost to my family, my wife, my three children, Chris, Chase, and Chelsea, who are here, my mother and father, Leaping Zellier, my brother and sister, Noah and Cindy, and their respective families who are all in the front row. Thank you for your support and allowing me to be able to serve as Mayor of Midland. Thank you, Monsignor Droll, Father, for being here today. Thank you all, elected officials. Again, this is a very exciting day. I mean, I did do my state of the colony speech in November after winning the election. And let me tell you, you talk about pressure, trying to get ready just after winning the election. That's tough, but that's the way Bobby Burns works and we all know that. It's all business. I look forward, and I'll keep my remarks brief, I look very forward to working with my colleagues on city council. We're very blessed and fortunate to be in our beautiful city of Midland, Texas, the tall city, which economically is doing vibrant things. We are challenged with great opportunities. And when I go to other communities and other cities and talk, and I get And when I go to other communities and other cities in Tahoe and I get to say that, yes, we have employment issues and yes, we have housing issues and yes, we have wire issues just like you, but there are great challenges and great issues. And as Mayor Wes Perry alluded to, we are very fortunate because we're a community who works together. And I can assure you, as your next mayor, your 29th mayor, that I look forward to working with every citizen to make this a better community. We are very blessed. And I understand from an economic standpoint, from a business standpoint, to our schools, our education, that we all have to get behind it and they have to make them better. Midland is the jewel of the state of Texas. And I'm so fortunate that I get to be a part of this with my colleagues. We're blessed that we have a strong management team. And we're very fortunate that we have citizens who care about our community, who are vocal and who are willing to get out there and work. Our nonprofits, and I'll keep saying this through my time on mayors, that our nonprofits, our churches, all of these organizations have to be a part of this growing community. It cannot just take the city council or our commissioners. And I applaud our council and our mayor who have created some great relationships with our other governmental entities. We have to work together to make Midland the best it can be. And I thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for your support. Councilman Trost, Councilman James, I hope that we continue to work forward. Thank you for those kind words, your great leadership and your great work. Councilmembers, you're ready to go to work. Thank you again for this day and very fortunate for all that I have. Family, thank you very much. And I think that I think that is the end of our ceremony. So God bless Midland, Texas, and God bless our citizens. Have a great day.